Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth City Council meeting for June 16, 2008, here in the Eileen Dondaro Foley Council Chambers. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to conduct the roll call.
Mayor Farini.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock.
Here.
Councilor Noveline Clayberg.
Here.
Councilor Dwyer.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Councilor Kennedy.
Here.
Councilor Spear.
Councilor Reynolds.
Here.
Councilor Pentelakis.
Yeah.
This time, I'd like you to ask everyone to rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And I'd like to ask Councilor Pentelakis to lead us in the pledge. First, I would say, as part of the moment of silence, could we recognize the passing of City Councilor Bob Keyes in the city of Dover? If you please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is my great pleasure at this time to recognize what is clearly becoming a tradition of sports excellence in our city, but first, we need to get the honorees in here. And I think they're coming now.
I'm sorry. No problem.
So you can please welcome the PHS Girls Lacrosse Team, Division III State Championships, Champions. Bring all the athletes in. The Clippers won their second straight state championship and were undefeated with a record of 18-0 for this year and last year for a combined two-year record of 36-0. And so, please accept our congratulations for that fine record. What we're going to do at this time is recognize you and give you mayor's awards, and it means that everybody's going to have to come up one at a time as we call your names. So, the city clerk is going to assist me first. We'd like to recognize Coach Cindy Fitzgerald. Next, Assistant Coach John Strater. Next, Manager Emily Bates. Bates doesn't appear to be here. Molly Brown and Elizabeth LeBar. We'll see that they get these later. Perhaps we could give them to you. Next, I'd like to recognize the players. So first, we have Emily Achilles. If Emily is not present, someone can give her her tee-shirt and her award. We'll also give you the... Okay, that's fine. We'll take the no-shows. And you can also take these, too, if you would be so kind. There you go. Next, Callie Aspinwall. Cassie Barubi. Thank you. Kelsey Byrne. Go. Don't forget that. Ally Marusik. And finally, Samantha Whitney. So let's give them all a hand. Click your opportunities. We've got a little... It's up on the screen, and you see the video. Congratulations once again to the PHS Girls Lacrosse Team. And I should take this moment to also say, in addition to your fine achievement, we will soon be welcoming in the city council chambers the boys Class I Baseball Champions, as well as the girls, I'm sorry, Class I, and the girls' Class I Softball Champions. So, we're proud of you all, and you did a great job, and thanks for coming down and getting a tee-shirt. You are not required to stay. You do not need to remain in the chambers unless this is civics class, and you have only three days of school less, so I'm guessing you really...
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Just to, as they file out and before we go on to the quarterly wastewater master plan update, we do have one or two other items, and I do want to take this opportunity to offer congratulations to our city manager, John Bohenko, Finance Director Judy Belanger, and the city, because our bond rating has been upgraded. And I think that's a fine achievement to be getting the best value we can for our money, and I'd appreciate it if the city manager could say a few words. Congratulations, by the way.
Well, thank you very much, Your Honor. The Moody's has given the city a AA2 rating, an upgrade from what we've had in the past, and Standard &amp; Poor's reaffirmed their AA rating for us. What that meant is, we sold $8.7 million of bonds last week, and we were able to get a 3.78% blended rate over 20 years. We have some at 10, but it's a blended rate of 3.78. The bond bank went out, and they sold probably another 40 basis points higher than us at about 4.20, something like that. So, I think it really goes to show that the city council's policies that they've put into place with the stabilization funds and fund balance and the things of that sort have really been paying off for us, and it shows over... For example, on a $10 million bond issue, if you're below grade, if you're rated below grade, it's probably another $1 million a cost to you for every $10 million. So, this is important, and 3.78% is really good. We didn't have to go out and find any bond insurance, which is a difficult situation now with the markets, and so we stood on our own and sold them quite readily. So, I want to thank you, Your Honor, for bringing that up.
Congratulations once again. Thank you. And with that, we move on to Dave Allen, Deputy Public Works Director, and the quarterly wastewater master plan update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have with me Peter Rice, the city engineer, who's handing out copies of the presentation. Also, Peter Goodwin, who is the project director from Weston and Sampson, and Steve Friedman, who is a principal with Brown &amp; Caldwell, one of the consultants, and the project manager, Mark Allen, from Brown &amp; Caldwell. This is going to be our second in of our quarterly updates, and as most of you are aware, we're really in the information gathering and compiling and assessing portion of the program right now. So, a lot of decisions haven't been made, but essentially, what we're doing is really gathering a lot of detailed and wide-ranging information on the program. What we're going to talk about very briefly is some of the components. As you recall, there are 14 tasks that we have to comply with on this study. Peter's going to give a little update on the schedule and a little update as to the work that we've completed thus far, where we're going, and I think what's important to note here is that, as we've gone through this, the project team is very much focused on making this a sustainable and cost-effective solutions, and it's not just the wastewater treatment plant, but this is our collection system also that we're dealing with, environmentally sound, and meeting both our regulatory requirements, but also with an eye towards funding eligibility for state aid grant and revolving funds as these projects move forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter Goodwin to talk a little bit about where the project has been headed.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks, Dave, and good evening. It's quite an honor for the three different teams to win their state championships. It's great. I'm going to pick up from where Dave left off, but I wanted to bring this slide back from our last quarterly meeting. Dave, reiterate that what we're talking about is two major components here. The wastewater treatment facilities, particularly Pierce Island, and also the collection system. They go hand-in-hand. It's pretty straightforward, but there are two major components. Overall, as Dave said, there's 14 different tasks, or actually 13, but we stay away from tricks or whatever it is. But this is the slide we had, and it has changed. We've finished the first three tasks, and I'm going to be talking about the results of the flow and load forecasting. The major task of this entire effort is Task 4 and 5, which looks at the collection system. I'm going to get into some detail on what we will be doing there or what we are doing. The alternatives evaluation, and that's the treatment facility alternatives. Future tasks, including scheduling after we come up with a recommendation of plans, funding strategies, and basically finalizing the documents that will be used to maximize your funding. Concurrently with our collection systems and alternatives, we're developing the public and implement the public and regulatory participation program, which is, this is a part of overall project management, working with Peter and the rest of the city in the SRF loan for this. And the supplemental task, which was a work plan upon that identified, or is identifying interim measures, and those are ongoing. The focus of tonight is looking at where we are in the interim measures, the collection system evaluation, and the alternatives evaluation. This is our overall project schedule. It's a little over three-year project schedule. We're right here in finishing up quarter two, the red being the tasks 1, 2, and 3 being completed. As you can see, Tasks 4 and 5 have just really been started. So, as Dave said, we're developing information gathering. One of the key things here is, there's been a lot of information compiled over the last 10 years that's been very useful for us to springboard off of, and we haven't had to repeat that. We've reviewed it, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. I'm going to talk first about the interim measures. This supplemental work plan was a result of the Conservation Law Foundation's appeal to the EPA and a settlement agreement that was signed in January of this year, and it looked at four overall components. And the reason was that there's a perceived problem that nitrogen and total suspended solids is affecting eelgrass in the watershed and in the estuaries and in the river. So, the settlement agreement came up with these four items: nutrient control, which is basically nitrogen reduction; a public outreach, because they felt it was very important to get the entire city, the entire community, the entire area involved; interim measures evaluation, I'm going to talk a little more detail about that, that focused on what could be done in this five-year permit cycle leading up to 2012, when the next permit cycle will start, specifically with nitrogen and total suspended solids. And as I said, the focus was on what could be done, because this plan is going to take three years, there's another supplementary several years of design, and then construction implementation before you're actually going to see some benefits. So, they were looking for interim measures within that permit cycle. What was the focus of those interim measures? There were basically four: stormwater pollution mitigation. Well, what does that mean? It's implementing things like porous pavement, so the rain goes through the pavement into the ground, infiltrating instead of two stormwater outfalls carrying the pollutants there; low-impact development, these are some buzzwords you've heard; also, reduction in wastewater treatment plant sources. One that was considered is eliminating taking septic at P's. It's a revenue factor. Things like that were evaluated. Also, best management practices, which are like urban BMP retrofits where a city or private entity is redeveloping an area or a project, do you want to implement stormwater, better stormwater techniques on those projects? And also, some wastewater treatment operational improvements, things like, instead of dewatering at Pierce Island where you have a lower amount of treatment, to actually take the sludge over to P's where you've got secondary treatment and treat it there, thus reducing nitrogen that would be getting to the river. Those are the types of things we looked at. It had a pretty strict timeframe on what we were doing, and the first thing is, all of these wide-ranging alternatives that were being considered, they don't compare apples to apples. So, we developed back in February and submitted what was called a comparative criteria analysis, and it's basically 20 to 22 different parameters, operational, cost-effectiveness, implementation, and it was used as a ranking system during our brainstorming session. The next step was to have the brainstorming sessions. We basically invited the regulators in from DES and EPA, and also the research community from UNH and the like, and we had actually two sessions. We developed, I think, over 100 the first time, 100 different alternatives, and then it was pared down and grouped in a second one to over 50 different alternatives. And the purpose of the brainstorming session was to identify the world, pare it down, and further evaluate. That was submitted, or completed in May, and between now and September, what we'll be doing, pairing that down to about six to eight different alternatives, we're going to be looking at three components for each one of those. What is the implementation cost? What's it going to cost to do those things? And most importantly, what's the effectiveness? Is it going to be effective in removing nitrogen in total suspended solids, or is it a marginal increase, and therefore, the cost might not be amenable? And what's the feasibility of implementation? So that's what we'll be doing for this summer. We'll be preparing a technical memorandum. Where impacts you is, later this fall, we're going to be bringing a shorter list from the six to eight down to you for possible approval. It may be a capital cost, and discussing them with you before the city may move forward, again, within this permit cycle before 2012. Task 3, as I said, Task 3 was completed. It was submitted to the EPA back in April. We talked about this at the last quarterly update. The key here was, we were able to use a lot of those 201 facilities plan, the city's master plan, other regional plans, and springboard off of that. And Brown &amp; Caldwell uses a pretty cool model, the CAPE model, to develop the forecasting. What we're trying to do is project out for the big facilities to year 2030, and then a build-out, which occurred somewhere in the 2050 to 2060 range. And we use that, the CAPE model's able to develop these flows and loads from different geographicals. So, we were able to use the city's GIS, which is a great GIS system, and we used the model with the GIS to develop some graphics and the loading. It allows it to be done geographically, so we know where the future development flows are coming from. Is it going to be from P's? Is it going to be from downtown? Is it, those types of things. Also, in addition to the wastewater flows, it's just the sanitary and the infiltration inflow, biosolids and a term that you may have heard, fog, fats, oils, and greases, which is a critical factor when you're designing facilities. It really impacts the operational ability of the facility. Those loadings were done, and those loadings were done not only for the city of Portsmouth and its current communities that are customers, but also regionally, all the way to the 44 communities in different scenarios, because of the fact that we may be able to maximize your funding if we're able to look at maybe a regional alternative for biosolids and fog handling, and we'll be doing that as we move forward. This is a combination population projection. It's the data that we use. It's from the Census Bureau. We also use from New Hampshire's Office of Energy and Planning, the employment growth in the city, and the employment projections, or the population forecast and the employment projections. This is a lot of the data that's been compiled by regional authorities, the state, the U.S. Census, and, you know, you could see the ramp up at P's and then the ramp down. The interesting thing in looking at this data is that, and some of you may realize this, but I didn't realize how high it was, but the city of Portsmouth has one of the highest ratios of employment or employees to residents in the region, the entire New England region, even a little higher than Boston. So, what it means is, a lot of people come into Portsmouth, obviously, with P's redevelopment. That's pretty straightforward, but I didn't realize how high it was. Flows and loads, the current population's a little under 21,000. We're looking at year 2030 to be a little over 24,000. This is pretty consistent with the other planning efforts that the city has undertaken or regional efforts. It's in line. The numbers are slightly different because the projections slightly change as we look at things. And then, the employment is almost 29,000 people are employed within the city, and we're looking at projections based on that growth of about a little under 36,000. In regards to the wastewater flows, we're looking at a future design flow of about 11 million gallons per day within the city and its current customers. That's about a million gallons per day of new sanitary flow, which is commercial and residential flows in year 2030. Also, we looked at, as I said, the biosolids and fog generation, and those numbers, it's more of a range, whether you're looking strictly at Portsmouth or regional, and those ranges will be used as we start to look at alternatives for treatment and processing. This is just a graph. This is Pierce Island's flows back from '94 to 2007. The green is the sanitary flow, and the blue is the infiltration and inflow component. And as you can see, it varies year to year, obviously, with the amount of rainfall, the groundwater conditions, and you can see the slight growth in the sanitary flow, which is the residential, commercial, industrial flows. P's data really only goes back to about 2004, and it's been pretty steady, but you can see the wet years. You do still have some older pipes out there, and the flows are a little higher in those wet years. It's pretty typical. We found that to be what we were looking for. Task 4, the collection system evaluation, really just got kicked off in March of this year. Here, the five major subtasks for that, which is field reconnaissance, going out and looking at areas that may have some flooding. The biggest component is the flow and rain monitoring program. I'll get into a little detail on that in a second. Looking at historic regulatory compliances, if there were any CSO events, how many, did it correlate with the rainfall conditions? Another big component, and here we built upon, the city had completed a hydraulic model several years ago, and we're able to reuse that model and update it with our new flow monitoring program, and also inputting the new pipelines that have been, sewer separation and things like that, that have been done over the last few years. Finally, we're going to look at the CSO water quality impacts, what are the impacts when CSO occurrences occur out in the river. A little status, we were able to get the meters installed in March. Little status, we were able to get the meters installed in March. We have 12 locations. In addition to those 12 locations, most of your major pump stations and your treatment facilities have flow metering. And what that does, it allows us to look at where the peak flows are coming from geographically, and I have a little figure on that in a second. We're able to actually get them in at a good period of time. The groundwater conditions when we first got them in was high, and that's your maximum infiltration into the pipes. Since then, the groundwater has dropped off a little bit, but we've also have over, I think, 18 to 20 storm events since we've had them out there, some very small events. We've had two or three that were over an inch of rain. And we're going to have these meters in, the 12 meters, in for another couple of weeks. And then the city has moved forward with making some of these meters permanent meters, so they will continue to be used in addition to your pump stations. So you're going to be able to continue to evaluate and update that model because these will be permanent locations. Ultimately, once this data is all in and compiled, we'll be updating that hydraulic model and looking where the choke points are. And this, again, is not going to be completed till the year 2009, the fall of 2009. And that allows us to get as much data in, the more data in, the more we can file in that hydraulic model. Here's an area of the downtown, and we worked with the city and the city's operations staff and the collection system staff to really locate some of these meters right where you're separated, the downtown areas, your combined system slowly being separated through your long-term control plan. But these three meters here are really at the terminus point from your separate systems, your newer sewer lines, where you would expect, you know, they're not combined flows, you're not getting stormwater in there, but they may have infiltration inflow problems due to some of their age or some of the connections. And we'll be able to take that data and see, within that service area, is it a typical inflow, infiltration inflow component, or is it out of whack? And then we can start to focus on that. And then the downtown areas and the CSO points at Deer Street and South Mill Pond are continuing to monitor flows continuously along with Pierce Island and Peas. Task five, as you saw in the schedule, task four and five really got started. Three major components. The biggest is the wastewater treatment options. We held a really great workshop with the regulators from DES and EPA earlier this month, and it was really the first step in screening, again, similar to the interim measures workshops or brainstorming sessions. What's out there? What's available? What are other communities in EPA Region 1 doing to meet the treatment needs of the regulations, the current permit and future permits? And we're going to be taking those and identifying, okay, what size is needed, what footprint is needed, what's the cost, what's the operational requirements, what's the staffing requirements and things like that as we move forward over the next year. The second component, as I talked about, was biosolids handling. We're evaluating local and regional alternatives, again, in order to maximize funding if appropriate. And then the third component is wet weather and CSO strategies. You do have three CSOs. Some of the treatment alternatives will impact what you can be doing with your CSO strategies. For instance, if the recommendation, the most cost-effective implementative solution is to take everything off Pierce Island, your wet weather flows still go there, your CSOs still go there. What would you need to do and how would you identify and screen those? We'll be having another workshop in August on that, and again, just starting out on that. So kind of a wrap-up here of where we are. We've completed the interim measures evaluation. We're working on completing the technical memorandum for that for this fall. Task four and five, we're really just getting started on moving forward. We're collecting a lot of good data with the rain gauge and the flow meters out there, and we're working on the initial workshops for the alternative assessment. We will continue to come back quarterly and update you as this project moves forward. More detailed information clearly will be coming out. And then we're planning to have a second presentation, wastewater 202, I guess, this fall, to follow up on the 101 that we had last fall.
Dave? Thank you, Peter. Counselors, if you have some questions?
Before we, I just wanted to make a point-
Is there more?
Because I think there has to be a point made relative to the Pierce Island plant. I think it's important for everybody to know that we're still in the stages of trying to assess if the plant would come off the island. There's been no decision made. That is what really this is all about, to determine where we can relocate that plant. So I think it's important to note that that decision hasn't been made, and we are, as a staff, trying to head in that direction to try to find another location to move the plant.
That's right. There's a lot of information on both the collection system and this whole operation of figuring out which technology we're going to use so that you can even size a plant and then determine a location on that. So it's all information right now that's going into the mill to gin up the answer.
Thank you. Anything further from Dave or Peter before we open it up to the counselors? Okay. Counselor Kennedy.
I basically have two questions, one question, one statement. I don't know if you have been involved at all with the Great Bay group that's doing the water watch out of UNH and C-grant. Are you doing anything with them?
Actually, Peter sits on the water quality board, and they haven't worked directly with that committee, but very much involved-
Well, they're doing a lot of water testing down in our area.
The lay monitors?
Yeah, yeah, and I think that might be a good public connection because they are doing testing down in that area, and it might be something-
We have utilized some of their data in the past. Peter Rice, City Engineer for the Water and Sewer Divisions. Counselor Kennedy, we have utilized some of that data in the past when we were looking at water quality impacts, so we realize that it's a valuable resource and we will continue to utilize that as we move forward.
Great. I just didn't know what that was. And the other thing is, is when you're doing task five and you're looking at your wastewater treatment options, I would encourage us to look at also, as you know, in the south and it's been a sticky subject about the causeway or the pipeline between and the blockage of the back channel. And maybe we can look at ways of maybe opening that up so there can be some flow as we're evaluating the whole process. That'd be great.
We'll keep track of that.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
At this time? Counselor Smith and Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you. Just a quick question on your, on the flows results for the population and the employment. I just want to make sure I understand the numbers right. For the current population, you're showing it 20,800, and then you show the employment population of 28,800. So it's another 8,000 for the employees that's coming into town?
No, there's 28,000 employees in town. Some of those live in town, some of those-
So it's a plus, so it'd be 40-
It's not, no.
Because I know some people work out of town. But I guess my main question is, is when, does that also take into account all of the hotel rooms and the projected hotel rooms that are in the community?
The, yes, the hotel rooms are included in the existing and the future flows. They're factored in.
As well as the existing, I mean, the potential hotel rooms that are coming to the area because we have three new projects?
Part of our, yeah, part of our planning effort to date has been to meet with the planning staff, the zoning folks, and look at those, your existing conditions, any potential changes there, and also to look at projects that are on the books right now.
Okay. Thank you.
And just a follow-up, the beauty of the CAPE modeling that uses your GIS is we're able to actually take that flow and put it to where that project might be. And going forward, if there are other projects, it's a really easy exercise to then take another look and look at your infrastructure because the model not only will develop flows, but it will be integrated with the collection system model to see if the pipe sizes are appropriate and things like that. It's pretty terrific.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Dwyer.
This is a question about the interim measures. You mentioned, you know, there are upwards of 100 alternatives that you've been looking at. Could you give just an example of like a complex, expensive, challenging alternative, and then an easy-to-implement-cheap alternative, just to give some examples of what those are like?
Oh, it could range from-
A complex one.
Okay.
A complex one would be to take some of the wastewater flow that's currently going to Pierce Island and construct facilities to redirect it to Peas.
To Peas, okay.
That's kind of a complex one. It may not meet some of the other parameters like designing and budgeting and implementing by 2012, but that was one of the, one of the complex ones, one of the easy ones. Public education, public education for a variety of things, fertilizing, car washing, pet droppings, which you already have a pretty good program, but to up the, so to speak, the public education on there.
Any further questions? I'll just ask because Ken, Counselor Smith started to ask it, and he did ask it, but do you know what the split is between population of Portsmouth, 21,000, 28,000 employed here? Do you know how many of those come in and how many are, live here and work, if you know?
I don't know how many come out, but I think the 45,000 during the day-
Is sort of the number we've been-
-type of population that's been-
Yeah. That's the non-tourist employed number. Yes. Okay. Thank you very much for your fine presentation. We'll look forward to seeing you again in the next quarter. Remind counselors, I'm certain they're always available for a question and answer as needed. And with that, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is going to be acceptance of the minutes for the June 2, 2008 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Now we have the item six on the agenda, which is the public comment session. We have one speaker this evening. The rules are that you may speak for three minutes, and at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will see a sign raised by our city attorney, and then the thank you sign is raised at three minutes. And this evening, our speaker is Hugh Jenks from the Pierce Island Committee regarding Pierce Island. Could you just put your address as well when you speak into the record, Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and Mr. Manager, my name is Hugh Jenks. I have the privilege to both live and work in the city of Portsmouth. I've reserved time tonight in my role as Chairman of the Pierce Island Committee of the city of Portsmouth. At the suggestion of the city manager, I'm here to address a letter from the Pierce Island Committee, which is included in your packet for later this evening. In our role as advisors to the city with respect to improvements to Pierce Island, we recommend a change in policy with regard to trash management practices on the island. Specifically, the committee recommends the adoption of a carry-in, carry-out policy at a savings of half a day's labor by two public works staff three times a week, relieving the city of Portsmouth of the responsibility of providing and maintaining trash receptacles, collecting, hauling, and disposal of trash, and making it the responsibility of visitors who generate it will help overcome the image of Pierce Island as a convenient dumping ground for urban waste. Carry-in, carry-out in the city's largest public park represents another step down the path towards sustainability of municipal operations that the city set out upon in the construction of the new public library building. The legislative history of the committee's deliberations and its collaboration with the responsible city departments in formulating this recommendation is set forth in the letter contained in your packet. I believe it's self-explanatory, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that may occur to you at the end of my remarks. Before concluding, however, I'd like to take my remaining time to speak to you briefly on the subject of the proposed consolidation of several city committees, not on behalf of the Pierce Island Committee, but rather in my capacity as an individual citizen volunteer in the service of our town governance. Without speaking specifically about the performance of any particular committee, but having interacted with all of those listed in the mayor's memorandum of June 10, I can make the following observations. The committee's structure of city government represents a remarkable variety of interests, supported by a large number of constituencies, each with a strong motive for involvement in various aspects of municipal life. Each committee provides a focused forum for public input and accountability on a number of topics, ranging from urban forestry to historic public cemeteries, sports facilities and programs, park improvement, animal control, which are perhaps small in scope but make up important parts of the quality of life tapestry that makes Portsmouth a nationally-ranked place to live. I'm a bit afraid that the untimely deaths of Hospital Hill gadflies, Ed Lawrence and Harold Ecker, has perhaps made those of us who work in this building to make Portsmouth a better place accustomed to the sound of silence from the public. I'm not certain what public purpose is served by discouraging citizens from having a voice at city hall on issues that they care deeply about, or by depriving the city of the creativity that motivated volunteers bring to the process of government. I'll be interested in hearing the council's views on the subject later this evening. In the meantime, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you. In particular, typically, I think that, thank you, Mr. Jenks, Hugh was speaking to the carry-in, carry-out proposal. That's also going to be addressed later in the agenda, and if you don't mind hanging around, unless people want to begin that discussion now, I think we'll move through the earlier portion of the agenda, and I appreciate your patience and courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
With that, we move to the public hearing, which is on for this evening, and this is regarding the amendment of the ordinance regarding payment by credit card. Without reading the whole thing, it just means that the city manager is authorized to direct appropriate municipal officials to accept the payment of local taxes and charges generated by the sale of utility services or other fees, as the city manager may determine by the use of the credit card. And without reading through the whole thing, that is the public hearing that is before us. Those of you present, and there aren't many, know the rules. There are three opportunities to speak, four to or simply, four against or simply two, and you can rise any of the three times if you wish. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to address this Anyone rising? Seeing none, we'll go to round two, and I'll move quickly. Seeing none speaking, we go to round three. No one has spoken, and I will close the public hearing. Next, we move on to approvals of grants and donations. The first is acceptance of a donation to the new library building fund from Robert A. Shains, $5,000, fulfilling a pledge. The appropriate motion would be to accept this, and can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next is an acceptance of a donation to the Coalition Legal Fund from the Town of New London in the amount of $1,000. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next is acceptance of the police department donation from the Portsmouth Police Explorer Cadets in the amount of 6,500 from the Crime Stoppers Organization. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next, we move on, and we've actually gotten to the consideration of resolutions and ordinances. We've had second reading, and the motion would be to pass second reading and hold a third and final reading at the July 21, 2008 city council meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. We now move on to the consent agenda, and once again, I tell you, if there's an item on there that you wish to call out for proper consideration, please do not hesitate to do so. Seeing no one looking to do that, I'll proceed. First is the acceptance of donations to ArtSpeak for overnight art event, the Donnelly Brothers in the amount of $10, Megan and Alfonso Fabrega in the amount of $10, Geraldine Eastler in the amount of $25, Jennifer Meister in the amount of $25, G.F. Wool and M.S. Solari in the amount of $25, Lawrence Yarden in the amount of $25, Michael Franzell and Judith Silver in the amount of $50, Jean Porter in the amount of $50, Stuart Weisong and Richard Hadlock in the amount of $50, and Adams and Roy in the amount of $500. Next, we move to the renewal of the sidewalk obstruction license with no changes from last year for the table, one table and A-frame sign for the River Run bookstore. And finally, a request from Keith Prince, Rudy's in Portsmouth, requesting permission for sidewalk obstruction license to place one A-frame sign in front of that establishment. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda with suggested action?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. We move now to the presentation of consideration of written communications and petitions, the first being a letter from Jay McSherry, Jumpin' Jays Fish Cafe, requesting a license agreement for the dumpster recycle totes and recycled biofuel oil receptacle that are located on Porter Street and shared by Jumpin' Jays, Riddichi, and the offices at One Middle Street. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we'd be moving this to the city manager for report back as to how that would go, and perhaps we could have the city manager briefly address that. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. The request is a result of the city staff looking at the dumpsters out on the street, similar to what happened at Church Street. We want to, you know, we want to work with the businesses to, so, because we know that the downtown has tight quarters, but we also need to license them so that we know who owns the dumpster, who is responsible- owns the dumpster, who is responsible for the dumpster, so that if there is an issue that we can immediately contact whoever is responsible and get it cleared up. Also, we may be looking at the sizes of the dumpsters. Instead of having one large one, we might do what we do at Church Street, maybe have two smaller ones, because then you can move them off the right of way a little bit more. So that is the intent, and what I'd like to do is work with staff and the owners and come back with a report back and a suggestion.
Any comments on that particular item? I would just say and ask the city manager, in particular, the biofuel oil receptacle, if there's a way to mask or make that something other than the, or make it a little more appealing, if that could be part of your considerations, as I'm sure it would be.
Noted, Your Honor.
Next, we move on to item B. Oh, we need it, we need to have, we've got a motion duly seconded, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you to the city clerk. Next, a letter from Majors Chester and Joy Emmons, the Salvation Army, requesting a license agreement for a dumpster located on Porter Street, tying into the same issue. The motion would be-
Move to the city manager with report back.
We have the motion, we have a second discussion.
This is similar to what we just talked about.
That's pretty clear. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Finally, a letter from Kimberly Jadoine, Moving Mountains, requesting permission to hold a three-mile bike loop in the center of Peas on Sunday, August 17, 2008, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and this would be sent to the city manager with power. If we were to move it?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second discussion. City manager, Councilor Kennedy?
I would just like to thank the group for considering Peas and downtown along the water for the bicycle. I think it's a great move to use other parts of the cities and enjoy other parts of the city, so thank you.
If you, I noticed there are two present. If you want to come up and just introduce yourselves so we can say hello, you know, I don't mean to embarrass you, we are on TV, but we do thank you for offering this, and if you have any questions, please direct them to the city manager. Okay. Discussion, any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Now, there's one other item on written communications, and I am apologizing in advance for, we have a request from a performer you have in front of you, from a gentleman named Mike Novak, and this is to engage in a performance at the Vaughan Mall. Unfortunately, the way the meetings fell, this individual did not get it, get this to us in time for the noon deadline on Wednesday, and as you know, and I will say again publicly, we really, really, really wish that we can receive them in advance of that deadline so that city councilors can have an opportunity to read them, think about them, perhaps call individuals if they wish. And in this case, in derogation of that rule, properly pointed out to me by Councilor Smith and others, I've got it before you, given that it is an art, a performing event, and I hope you have an opportunity to read it. Perhaps we could get a motion to the city manager with power.
Move to the city manager with power.
Second.
Okay. City manager, do you care to address this one?
No, we typically will work with, you know, we try to encourage people to utilize the Vaughan Mall. I think that's been, you know, the whole intent of that area. It's set up for these types of things, so we'll work with Mr. Novak, and hopefully more people will continue to use that area.
Thank you. Noted once again, and let's once again try to do the best we can on the 12 o'clock on Wednesday before the next Monday city council rule. With that, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Now we move to the city manager's portion of the agenda.
Name?
I'm sorry, Councilor Dwyer.
I wonder if what you just said could be posted on the city's website, because I don't think the general public knows about our deadlines, and so-
I will post it.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Someplace where it's clear so that somebody like this would know.
Great idea.
What I will do is, we'll set up a situation where on every week before, we'll just, we'll actually post it on a regular basis, the deadline.
Thank you.
Every week, we'll do, every meeting before. That way, it's not lost.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that good suggestion, Councilor Dwyer. Any, anything further on this, and if not, we'll move to the city manager's portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item that I have is New Hampshire Department of Transportation request for license regarding the Memorial Bridge parking and emergency generator. Mr. Landry from the Department of Transportation is here this evening to answer any questions you might have. He's the project manager on the rehab of the Memorial Bridge, and as you can see from his letter, he's requesting permission to locate an emergency generator under the bridge on the city property. Further, he's requesting that the bridge operators continue to be able to park on city-owned land under the bridge. I've attached a map of the area. Mr. Landry is here tonight to answer any questions the city council may have. The city staff has reviewed this, and we would recommend that the city council authorize myself to enter into the appropriate license agreements to allow NHDOT to place an emergency generator in the area that would not interfere with the future riverwalk, which is 10 feet off the property line, and that we would also allow employee parking on the city property under the bridge. It basically would be to, it would be a reauthorization of the existing license that we have to allow the operators to park, and then this would be a new license for the emergency generator. And Mr. Landry is here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, if people are gonna, okay, I see that there's going to be one question for Mr. Landry in that case. Before we hear a motion in this case, let's ask Mr. Landry to come forward, and then we'll have a question. Councilor Kennedy?
My question is, emergency generator, that's pretty close to the water, and what other licenses do you need to have that there, and is there going to be any effect on the waterfront being so close, giving off anything from the generator?
Has everybody got a copy of the map and that?
Yes.
Everybody's got it?
We provide it, yes.
The abutment for the Memorial Bridge is between the waterway and that generator, and there'll be also a fence that kind of closed that area in. And this is only for cases where we lose power coming in from the Portsmouth side, so the operational amount of this generator is gas-fed, underground gas line, being a lot safer condition, and I really don't see an impact to the water. I must be missing something since you're asking the question.
What type of fuel are you going to use?
We're going to use gas, natural gas, as it feeds through-
Natural gas.
Yes.
So it's not going to have any liquid at all?
I don't know natural gas that well to know if that's a liquid or not, but-
Steve, maybe you can come forward and just answer a question. That's, I believe, what your question is.
Yeah, and I guess being so close to the waterfront, those are questions that normally we ask the Army Corps of Engineers and that kind of thing, so I was a little curious about where they were involved in all this.
Yes, this will be a natural gas-fired standby generator for the operations of the bridge, similar in nature to the ones that the city has its own at various pumping stations throughout the city, which are all natural gas-fired, so you don't have the issue of spilled fuels like you would with diesel or gasoline. They're basically a self-contained unit that has no issues.
Okay, further questions before we get a motion on the floor? Do you want questions? Councilor Smith?
Thank you. I was just wondering the testing schedule of this, because there are proposed residential units on both sides of the bridge.
Yeah. It needs to be, it needs to be run maintenance-wise about once every two weeks, and we're more than willing to try to work with the neighborhood and figure out a good time for that during the day, I would assume would be the best, but whatever works in the neighborhood wouldn't be a problem for us to run it for that.
Counselor, we'll put that in the license. It will be a daytime op, actually, they'll have to exercise it every two weeks, but we'll do it during the daytime hours.
During daytime hours. Thank you. Noted, appreciate it. Councilor Dwyer?
Actually, it was the mention of noise in here that caught my attention as well, and is, I understand it's an emergency generator, but is there an intention that during the rehabilitation process, the several rehabilitation process, that there will be a need to use this generator more than there might be in the case of, you know, a true emergency?
Bless you.
Is that, is that part of the expectation, or is this solely for what I'll call true emergencies?
This, this generator, there'll be a temporary power feed to the bridge during the rehab project, who will not be running directly from the emergency the entire time operate the bridge. They will need to test this generator before the completion of the project, so you will hear it work and then to make sure that it does work.
Right, but beyond the testing, there isn't the intention that somehow this is a power feed for aspects during the, related to the rehabilitation itself?
That's correct. It will not be.
Further questions? Mr. Landry, seeing none, we're going to need a motion to get this thing moving. Thank you, Mr. Landry.
So moved.
If you can hang around just for a moment. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I think we heard it all. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is the, as Mr. Jenks had talked about earlier, the request from Pierce Island Committee regarding a carry-in, carry-out refuse policy, and I attached a letter from Mr. Jenks, chairman of the Pierce Island Committee, regarding the recommendation that the city adopt this policy with regards to trash on the island. The city staff believes it's worth attempting a pilot program to see if this policy would work. One caveat is that we'd like to keep the trash receptacles on the inside perimeter of the outdoor pool. We have over, you know, two to 300 people coming in there a day. Pool staff would be responsible for it. We'd have a couple receptacles out there, and we'd put away those receptacles in the evening so that we would make sure that we wouldn't encourage anybody to try to toss it over the fence and that type of thing. So what we'd like to do is get the council's approval to conduct this pilot program basically for the summer months.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. Councilor Kennedy?
Um, no, I was just seconding.
Oh, okay. That was the second.
I was getting a little excited.
Noted. And Hugh is still here, if there are additional questions. Councilor Dwyer?
I do think the point that the city manager just made is really important. I know I discussed this with some members of the committee, and some, I know, feel very strongly that even at the pool, there shouldn't be trash receptacles. However, you know, I envision the mom with two kids and the tissue in one hand and the banana skin in another, and I, it just feels to me like inside the pool area, it's really critical that we do that, even though I understand that part of the idea was all or nothing. But that might be something we should have-
Yeah, we can take a look at it, but from an operational standpoint, we believe it's like any other operation within the city. It's a facility, you know, that is, has a lot of people coming in and out of it. Let's try the outside areas and see how it works and see what we get. And like I said, in the evening hours, those will be brought in and-
Yeah.
Councilor Dwyer, Councilor Reynolds? I'm sorry, Councilor Penalakis, I'm looking at her and I'm sorry.
I'd just like to say that I think that we very much need them inside of the pool because we sell a lot of items there. We shouldn't expect a mother to bring a bag with her to carry that out, but I really agree with the carry-on and carry-off on the rest of the island.
Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just since it's, it's going to be a change of practice, I would expect, are you anticipating a need for some substantial or just signage to-
Yes, we're going to do signage, yeah. Signage, outreach, we have an intern out there. We're going to be doing some public outreach and make sure, and it's going to take some education, yes.
Yeah. No, but I agree with the recommendation. I've seen this at, you know, I'm sure that's where it's coming from, parks, national parks, state parks, so it's good to go.
Councilor Smith?
Thank you. I guess it's more in agreement with everybody. I think it's a great idea. I'm glad we're doing it. I also think that it's important to have it in the facility because we also have employees that are there, and they have their trash. But my one concern is we just, I know they've just put up the bags for the dogs, for the dog waste, just make sure we have the signage for that, that they're carrying that out as well. Oh, yeah, that's the intent. Okay. That's just convenience for those that didn't bring their own bags.
Okay, we're going to need a motion then. We've had the discussion in advance of it, under the guise of asking questions, which is fine.
We have the motion.
Oh, we already had the motion? Okay, all right, never mind. Thank you for correcting me. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in unanimous.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item deals with the proposed date for Boards and Commissions' annual recognition night. I wanted to make sure council members were able to check their calendars. That would be for November 13th, 2008, for the second annual Boards and Commissions' recognition night, and that would be Thursday, November 13th, 2008.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
That's a difficult night because it's my personal budget season on Tuesdays and Thursdays during that time of year, so it would be very difficult for me. If we could do it Monday or Wednesday, that'd be great.
I will also know that I happen to be in New Orleans that night.
Why don't I do this? Why don't I come back with another date to try to, we'll try, we were looking at dates, Kelly, right? And there, there are not that many around, but-
There weren't that many around, and I kind of had to do it in between the presidential general election because I'm going to be quite busy that time.
Unless we push it into the first part of December.
We could do that.
Why don't we come back with a suggested date? How's that? Another one?
Care to withdraw the motion?
I will, what I will do is I just, you don't have to do anything, I'll just bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And now let's move on to the request for license agreement regarding the Music Hall.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The Music Hall is seeking a license agreement to facilitate the completion of the renovation activities at their facility. The renovations are due to be completed in September 2008. The Music Hall had a license agreement back in 2006 at the commencement of the renovation activities, and the agreement has expired. The attached draft license agreement makes it clear that Porter Street and Chestnut Street are to remain open under this agreement. There may be a need for an occasional temporary closure for a couple hours. When cement is poured, spelled out in the draft license, any closure must have the prior approval of the Department of Public Works and will require police detail and notification of the fire department. Also attached are aerial photographs of indicating the area of the proposed license agreement, and we would recommend that you authorize me to enter into this agreement.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Councilor Smith?
Thank you. Just while you're working on that, Mr. City Manager, some of the concerns that have come up in Traffic and Safety and Parking Committee meetings have been when these, the Chestnut Street and Porter Street do get blocked off, the residents of the condos that are right there have difficult times, so as long as it is taken into consideration that they may have to go the wrong way up a street in order to access their, their parking area. Right, that's why there's a requirement for police detail, and so we are fully aware of that, and thank you for bringing that up, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
The next item, Your Honor, is a request for a license agreement for 40 Congress Street. Back in April, the city council approved the license agreement for William Grenier, building contractor, to facilitate renovations at 40 Congress Street. The license agreement allowed for the use of two parking spaces, Monday through Friday only, in front of 40 Congress Street for their construction. We've attached an aerial view of the two parking spaces. The license agreement is set to expire, or has expired. Mr. Grenier informed the legal department on June 9th, 2008, that he would like an extension of the license till July 11th, 2008. The licensee will defer from use of the licensed spaces on July 4th. The city will continue to be compensated at forty dollars per day for the loss of these spaces, and its interior renovations of that location to accommodate a bank, and so we would recommend that that be allowed.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Pretty standard, straightforward construction management. Pretty standard, straightforward construction management. Counsel Kennedy?
Um, maybe he could do it on July 3rd and July 4th due to the fact the fireworks are on July 3rd, and a lot of people are downtown.
Okay. July 3rd too? All right.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous?
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. The next item is a report back regarding the proposed postponed action regarding the Conservation Commission's establishing an open space committee. I, in my memorandum back to you this evening, I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Steve Miller, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, and he has a letter in your packet. And what we basically are saying, and I think is a result of our conversations at the last meeting, that we would recommend that the Conservation Commission as a whole, or acting as a subcommittee comprised of its own members, conduct an open space inventory with a focus on land conservation value. And I did work with the city attorney and the, the environmental planner, and we did pull out the statutes. And what essentially we will do is to have the Conservation Commission pretty much follow the statutes, which is their charge anyways, to deal with this. And Mr. Miller has, is in agreement with how we're going to approach this, and I think it really is under their purview anyways. So it would be a committee, a subcommittee or a committee, whichever he chooses and his, and the Conservation Committee chooses. And they would probably use a wildlife specialist to do some inventory work, and also we have a lot of information that staff can work with them on. So the idea would be to put together the, this inventory, this open space inventory, which would be a resource to the whole city. And it is part of their charge anyways under the statute, so I'm recommending that we proceed in this manner, and Mr. Miller is here tonight.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Counsel Kennedy?
Um, I would just like to make sure that they are able to use the expertise of others to accomplish this mission. In other words, I, I, there's great people on that Conservation Commission, but I also know they're very busy people. And I think that was one of the reasons I was in favor of the ad hoc committees, is it allowed other people to come in and give them support, and give them ideas, and be part of it that might not necessarily have time to be on the Conservation Commission. So I want us to be a little bit open about this, and acceptance of other people's knowledge and guidance and information in dealing with these open spaces.
Right. And I did talk to Mr. Miller about that, and he's indicated that he is fully aware of the people that are involved, and he, they, he would, and it'll be up to the commission, but they, they will be inviting people in and using whatever expertise that they have in addition to what we may have to retain on the outside.
Further questions or discussion?
Yes.
Okay, a good clarification. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next, the next item I have is, just a follow-up, is as a, a report back regarding the consolidation of committees. And as you recall, on May 19th, the city council voted to instruct the city attorney to draft an ordinance to create a new Recreation, Parks and Open Space Committee that would assume the functions of existing Recreation, Pierce Island Cemetery and Dog Committees. I've attached a memorandum from Attorney Sullivan, and this will act as my report back to you, and I would ask the city attorney to walk through his memo and the proposed ordinance.
Sure. In response to the council request, I drafted, I think about the most simple and straightforward ordinance that could possibly be done to accomplish the suggested purpose. The way that I wrote it was, I took the model of the Pierce Island Committee ordinance, which has been, I think, particularly successful one, and I modified it by adding the duties suggested by the council. And I also, in order to eliminate what would be superfluous in the ordinance book, if this ordinance were adopted, I eliminated or suggested elimination of the ordinance provisions creating the Recreation Board and the Pierce Island Committee. Because the matters involving dogs and, let's see, one of the... and cemeteries, because those two committees are not established by ordinance, it was not necessary to delete any ordinances if this one is adopted. They would simply just cease to exist. It's really as simple as that.
And, and Your Honor, what I did is I gave the council basically two options. I mean, there's multiple, I'm sure, but they're really two. First, you could just take this ordinance and bring it back for first reading on July 21st, or you could choose to conduct a work session on this matter on the 21st prior to our regular city council meeting.
I'd like to move that we conduct a work session on our July 21st prior to our regular city council meeting? Second.
Discussion. Counsel Kennedy?
Um...
Second.
I think I saw someone, I heard someone second.
I did.
Counsel Pentalakis?
I guess I was concerned because I think the original thought we were asking for, for information from the city is how affected the city is by the overburden that was suggested by people here of city staff. And I'm not sure if that's in, I didn't feel that that was answered.
Do you want me to speak to that, Your Honor?
Please do.
Um, well, we feel that, you know, that there are issues, there are, from time to time, every committee has its need for city staff support. And it sometimes ranges from a lot, depending on what's happening with that particular committee, to very little, depending on their, their workflow. I suspect that if this, if this group is set up and this ordinance as such, if there's 11 to 15 members on this, I suspect that is going to end up becoming somewhat subcommittee-driven because there will be subcommittees. And so I think there will probably be a requirement for city staff involvement. And it may be similar, it may be equal, it may be less. We won't know until it's actually established, Counselor. Because we don't know to what extent, whatever the makeup of this committee is, what they're going to do for their, their governance, for their subcommittees. So we can talk more about that at the work session. I can actually go out and I can, what I can do is I can talk to each of the, the staff that are involved, and we can, we can talk about that.
But I guess my, I'm confused why we're to this point. I'm confused why we're eliminating committees. Originally, I was under the impression we were eliminating committees because of the amount of time by city staff to support committees. And I sit on these committees, and I don't see a lot of city staff at those committees. So I guess if that's not the rationale for eliminating committees, then what is, what is the rationale? And maybe I need to hear for that from some of the, the committee itself. But I'm missing the point of why we need to eliminate committees in a city when committees and people have been very active and have made it the city that it is. And so I guess I need to hear from someone what the rationale is behind this.
Anyone care to respond?
Sure.
Counsel Dwyer?
Um, I'm not sure that the rationale is, at least in my mind, is what you suggested. I think part of the idea was to be able to form committees in an effective way where committees that have similar jurisdictions actually address the issues under their jurisdiction in committee and then bring it to the council. So for example, it doesn't help us a lot if a dog committee and a Pierce Island committee are at opposite ends of the spectrum, and they bring their different issues to the city council to be settled. The, the effective public work on a committee is to work some of those things out within committee and bring them for recommendation. In talking to some people on the committees, one of the things I was interested in is that they raised how much they would like to have city staff, you know, to support your observation, connect to their committee. And, and one committee said even once a year. Well, that says to me that there aren't enough city staff to go around, and that in fact, we have not been able to, and how could we? With 43 different committees, how could we expect that city staff would staff all those committees in the same way that we do Planning Board or HDC? So I think part of the idea was to build a committee and raise up the status of committees that would address similar issues, so that you'd have a body of folks deliberating the issues that really do need to come to this board. They would have the support of high-level city staff to make their jobs easier and to connect to the necessary kinds of issues that come up at, at staff. And I think, you know, for me, in talking to some folks about this, the idea of wanting to connect to city staff was reinforced.
Counsel Smith?
Thank you. Now, it was my intent also that, to try to eliminate some of the committees, again, to consolidate it so we get the work done easier. There are some times, and I have witnessed it, where you'll have issues that will take three to four months to go through different committees to answer everybody else's questions before they can get a resolution. And there is a lot of staff time that's taken on that, whereas you can have a committee that, when you have issues that go across jurisdictions, you can get the, you know, good government get it done in one night, have, put everything out on the table. The reason why I am not moving forward to have this to go right to first reading is so that we can field some of these questions and really get all the issues out there. There is a perception that we're trying to rush this through, and that could be furthest from the point. That is not, was not the intent of myself or Counsel Pentalakis or Counsel Dwyer upon this. It has also been mentioned that I'm trying, we're trying to get the public out of committees. That is the furthest from the truth. There are a lot of staff members that sit on here. We're talking about having just citizens on these and support staff to them as needed. You also have instances where, you know, there are some blue ribbon committees. Blue ribbon committees are advisory only. They come up here, they give their, their input to us. It's completely advisory. Now, by establishing something, taking their hard work and actually giving it some teeth, giving it an ordinance, and giving it some, some value to it, things will get done. You have a group like the Pierce Island Committee that for year after year after year has done a, a great job on their master plan, and they come up before the CIP, and they get cut, and they get cut, and they get cut for a lot of the projects they have to do. Yeah, I'm one of them that has voted for some of those cuts as well. However, now, when you're starting to combine the efforts of everybody moving forward, you can, you can have a better chance of getting things in the budget and getting the work done together. The dog committee is one, I know, they don't meet that often. But when they do, it's usually very heated. Maybe if this is part of a monthly meeting, situations are not going to arise to the boiling point that they have, that they'll be able to be voiced, things will be resolved and calmed down. And again, personally, I think a lot of these type of conversations should be kept for the work session, and that's the reason why I've asked for the vote to move this to the work session at our next meeting.
Well, we've got a vote to move it to the work session, and so that will be the time for discussion. So we can have further discussion on it, but this is not the work session regarding that. And, and I will just say, as Chair, as I'm going to be involved in setting that agenda, it'll be my intention to ensure that there is full participation from all committees that are involved in this, so that they have an opportunity to speak at that work session. And I also think, I didn't see anywhere in the memo, does the city attorney have, how many positions would be removed by this consolidation? Do you, do you have a sense?
Municipal and...
No, 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 no.
Appointees.
Appointees. If you know?
No, I don't know.
All right, never mind. Okay, additional discussion. Counsel Reynolds?
Actually, that was, that was the point I was going to make, that this is actually strictly speaking a motion to have a work session, so we didn't necessarily have to have the discussion here.
Okay, noted.
Yeah, I agree with the points that Counsel Smith made, though. It's not about reducing participation, it's having it more efficient.
Counsel Kennedy?
Then I would encourage us to move our work session to September. And the rationale behind that is in the summer, it's very difficult with people on vacation to really participate in this. The other thing is, is I still think that you both have mentioned city employees, and we need the data of how many people have participated and how much time a month these committees are taking from city employees.
City manager?
The city manager said to give it.
Yep. Well, could you respond? Do you want to respond?
Okay, Your Honor, thank you. Well, we will, I'll, I'll talk to, basically, it's Everett and the Public Works Department, Ross Wilson, maybe Steve every once in a while, the committees that we're talking about here. So I'll get that information. Let me just suggest, let me just say that if we have the work session in July, that would be good. But if the council decides to go forward with this ordinance, there will be a public hearing.
Right.
And, and it probably won't be until September.
Right.
So just so that you're aware of that.
I, I'm just going to take Chair's privilege again to say, we have this proposed, Counsel Kennedy, you may make that a motion to amend, but before we make that a motion to amend to move it to September, I can tell you right now that 6:00 to 7:00 before the meeting isn't going to be long enough. I just know it. So I guess I'd ask the city manager, I mean, it'd be nice, but I don't think it's going to be a truncated discussion. So any thoughts on how we might manage that without either that or schedule a meeting later and have a longer work session in advance of it? Or perhaps Counsel Kennedy makes her as an amendment? Or perhaps Counsel Dwyer, we, you know, we need, I'd like a suggestion from you before we get into that.
I mean, we get started and get some of the, the basic, you don't have to start your meeting right at 7:00.
Right.
You know, so the meet, the work session go from 6:00 till 7:30, and then you can start into the regular meeting.
Well, that might be reasonable, then. Counsel Dwyer?
Don't take this personally. The attempts to fan the flames already haven't worked that well because the folks that, at least I have talked to, that Counsel Smith has talked to, who all received a letter about it, who were committee members, have been extremely thoughtful in their response and understand what some of the options are. So I don't, I think there is a lot to talk about here, but I don't think you're talking about people who are necessarily all thinking that this is a bad idea, because we've had the opportunity over the last couple days, since our names were in a memo that was sent out to all of those people, to talk with them about options, ideas, how this might work out, what their thoughts are on which things should be combined and which shouldn't. So it may not take as long as you might think.
I don't recall offering a pejorative as to whether or not it was negative or positive. Any further comments, Counselor, Assistant Mayor Blalock?
Yeah, just a couple of things on the, concerning about the length of the work session. It's just the beginning. As Counsel Smith said, we're not, we're no hurry if, you know, the first work session could be just a beginning. Because in just doing a rough count of the four committees involved that we're dealing with first, we're closing in on roughly 40 people, reducing it. And that may, some of that may be reduced because some may be overlapped, and some may be city staff. But if we're dealing with 35 or so people, around to 15, there may be a lot of people that want to come and speak. I'm sure that other councils have heard from some of them already. But it will probably be a positive discussion and a negative discussion. If we run out of time, we just have another work session before we proceed.
Fair enough. Additional questions? Counsel Pentalakis?
I, I think that the idea of, of this discussion is great because a blue ribbon committee can be done away with tomorrow by you. You can say, no longer dog committee, no longer cemetery committee, no nothing, because there's no ordinance, it's coven.
And make it part of another committee. Good point. Counselor Kennedy?
Um, in, in our discussion, we might also want to include, I have a hard time with counselors being chairs of committees. And maybe we need to look at the whole makeup of, of the committees and what's going on. I mean, if we're going to be a, a point up front, then we, we want to hear from every citizen, and we have citizens be real active if we're going to cut back.
Further discussion? Well, we, we're going to have a work session, and we're going to have it in July. All in favor? Well, we need a motion. We have a motion.